I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a city council work session. It is 6:00 PM on Monday, January 27th. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Clerk will take the role.
Councilmember Middleton.
That's it.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Present.
Councilmember Rathmo.
Present.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Present.
Councilmember Dundon is absent. Council President Pro Tem Poray Hotchkiss.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. First item is RL 25-18, Considered in Municipal and Public Affairs with Chair, with Chair Councilmember Middleton, and our presenter is Captain Bidwell.
Hello.
Hello, everybody.
How are you?
I am doing well.
Good. So this is RL 25-18, A Resolution to Accept the Funds from the Bureau of Justice Assistance for Two New Police Vehicles. Can you explain that?
Yeah, so the grant is for $202,000. It's a completely, it's 100% reimbursable grant. It's for two vehicles, one for like a transport vehicle, so a 12 to 15 passenger econo van. And then the other one is for a light truck to keep equipment on it for emergency situations.
And they're brand new?
That'll be brand new vehicles, yes.
And just a random question, because I know we had some questions. How long do vehicles last? Like, what's a typical, like, how many years do you keep the cars on the road?
That I would have no idea.
Wondering. What else?
My only thing would be, I think it's sometimes when the, any departments like vehicles come up, they could be useful to have like inventory of the vehicles for the police department, just as like a reference point, because I don't think any of us have that, and it'd be useful.
I think for Alyssa, if you wanted the fleet, I mean, that's something I'm sure that you could get through the traffic division. I'm sure they maintain records of how many patrol vehicles, special investigations and such.
That's not something that the department maintains?
Not, not where I am, no. I'm sure Traffic Division, part of the Binghamton Police Department would have it, yes, or the chief would have it.
Do, and just to clarify, when you say new, these are not replacing existing, like, new vehicles, replacing?
We don't, we currently don't have them at all.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
I guess, is, where does this get the department to in terms of fulfilling needs for cars this year?
So as far as the, or the department's fleet and the shape of the fleet, I would be the wrong person to be asking these. I do the grant, so I run the Crime Analysis Center for New York State, and I'm still currently a Binghamton cop for a couple of months longer. And then I also do all the grants, so, which is why I'm here today. So like for us, like this grant, this is, really, this grant is just because of relationships that we've built with DCJS. So they'll, they'll, they'll say, hey, we have $70,000 for body cameras, or we have $200,000 for vehicles. Is this a need that you have? If it is, we'll give you the money. So that's where these type of grants come from.
Oh, that means that they tell, they tell you what they have money available for, as opposed to you going after needs, specific needs that the city has. It's more about?
We'll do both. So like this, like, so there, like, we, we do have money available. Does your department have needs? So then this is where the two vehicles came up, and they're said absolutely, write for it, and then we'll give you the money.
So there was a prioritization list from the department that when money comes up, you say, this is our top need, or they say, we have money for cars, and you say, these are the top cars we need?
So for, so for this instance, this was, hey, we have money for vehicles. Is there certain vehicles that you would have? So this is the discussion I would have with the chief. And I might give my two cents of what I feel is important for the department, but at the end of the day, he's going to make the decisions. But like, I mean, as far as like training goes, like a transport van, I can't tell you how many times we've gone to Ohio for a training or Fort Drum where kind of us are going, or Boston. And so instead of taking four vehicles, it just made sense, or large-scale events, Luma Parade Day, where we have to move officers, a large number of guys and girls at the same time. We don't have something that can accommodate that. So these were just vehicles that made sense for us.
Okay, so you gave Luma as a specific event and training. Is there any other specific events that come to mind?
Parade Day is a big one.
That's coming up.
That's coming up. Anything like large-scale, like traffic events, so every parade, where you're moving cops to different corners, you're going to move auxiliary guys to different corners. So just something that we can load a lot of people in and move them at the same time.
Okay. So you have, you'll be able to move more people with only one person driving them?
Right, instead of.
Save, save on workforce.
Operating numerous vehicles.
Okay. Anyone else?
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Yes.
All right, next on the, next on the agenda is RL 25-17, Considered in Finance, with Councilmember Kavanaugh. And we welcome down Billy Goodson.
Good evening.
Hi, Billy. Hi, Chuck. Do you want to walk us through this one?
The Village of Johnson City and City of Binghamton have requested this Joint Sewer Board transfer funds to the City of Binghamton as the lead agency for the TPS project. The funds will go towards the engineering design services that have already started on the project. By us transferring the funds out of our budget, it'll reduce the amount that is needed to bond when it comes up in April.
And these, and this is in 2024 budget, so we're, we're, we're going back.
Right.
And making this fund, making this funding available.
Yeah, we, yeah, I got with the village and the city, and it made good sense, since they had budget left over, that we already have engineering bills that we need to pay, excuse me, from 2024. So we're using some of their budget to help alleviate the need for the city to borrow that much money and the village, because they're sharing costs for the TPS project.
And this is the, the maximum amount that was able to be found, or safe to find, or?
We hadn't received, when I went to the Joint Sewer Board meeting the first Tuesday, second Tuesday in January, we hadn't received a final bill yet. The actual cost is about 320,000, but we're getting 300,000, which is, that's fine. That, that is certainly going to help out both the village and the city for any borrowing. We already have the money to pay the rest. And then we're on the hook, since we are the lead agency, to help to do a payment anyway.
Did the sewer board have any particular concerns, or they're signing, they, they?
No, they agreed to it.
Okay. Any other questions, folks?
That's all. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda is RL 25-19, Considered in Finance, again with Councilmember Kavanaugh. And we're going to welcome down Jeff Krueger, the Superintendent of Water and Sewer.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'll have you give us an overview, I guess, although I will, actually, let me take a stab at it. Those great interest returns we've gotten are going to immediately get eaten up by expenses on electricity.
Yes.
Yep, the sewer fund was the last fund that I was going through electricity bills on. As you know, we've been doing a lot of electricity adjustments throughout the last couple of months. And this is it. We've gotten all the bills in, so this will be able to pay for the electricity bills in the sewer fund.
And it's at least being covered by interest earnings, essentially, right?
It's, yes, they, that was, we're earning a lot of interest from that, if you recall, at $4 million that we got from leftovers settlement funds that we have to keep in the reserve in the sewer fund.
Pretty straightforward. Any questions from anybody? No.
There's a, not this expedited, request expedite.
All right, yes, I'll motion expedite. Thanks, thank you for catching that, Councilman Hotchkiss.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, for consistency, we'll just do, do a roll call. So the motion was made by Councilmember Kavanaugh and seconded by Councilmember Middleton. Take the role on the expedition.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Rathmo.
Aye.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Dundon is absent. Council President Pro Tem Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have RL 25-16, Considered in Public Works, with Councilmember Hotchkiss, which is me, and welcome down Ron Lake. We have a resolution authorizing a revised supplemental agreement number two with the New York State Department of Transportation for the Main Street Corridor Study. Do you want to give us an overview, Ron? I know you've been here before to talk about this, but what are we looking at?
This is good news for our pedestrian safety project that we have with Main Street. And after the bids came in, they were quite a bit higher than what we had been told they would be, and we were able to go back to BMTS and negotiate with them and come up with another 500,000 for the project. And that's what this agreement is for, is to increase what they had originally allocated for us. So it means that we're getting more funds for our Main Street project.
Okay, and how much did the, did we underestimate that project that needed to be?
Just about 500,000, which is what we got.
So there's not really going to be any impact on our budget, or how much is coming out of the local?
Now, the only thing that will affect our budget is they do not cover the pavement costs. And a lot of the pavement costs are going higher, so it will cost the city a little bit more.
Do you know how much more?
Well, we originally like it, I think around 500,000, we're going to be closer to a million now.
Okay. Is, and then are we, are we prepared to handle that increase? Is that something?
We are, we have the budget for it.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for Ron?
I guess, yes, so money, do you have money in the budget to do this? But what work is not going to get done with half a million dollars moving to this project?
We're doing it all.
So there's?
We have the, we have the budget to do it all.
Okay.
Okay.
Ask your question.
Not a question, I just presumed that there'd be something that you'd be able to do with half a million dollars that you are now not going to be able to do. That's, that's it. I was just curious what work was not going to happen.
We didn't get that before. I had to worry about that. I was able to negotiate with BMTS, and we got it, so. It's all, Broom County actually helped us on this one. They deferred one of their projects per year, so.
The main thing that's not happening is something at the county level.
Yes. But it will, yours will happen next year.
So I, Mr., perhaps I'm not seeing something, I, this is an amendment to the agreement with the state, which just reflects the increased local cost, but I don't see anything in the packet about the extra share that BMTS is providing.
If.
It's just adjusting our local cost from, what was it, $100,000 to?
But BMTS is the one who administers the DOT funds, so you won't see BMTS there. But you will see if you, I believe there's a part in the packet that goes through the increase. It shows. There is a one page that shows the, the total cost and the federal funds.
Where are we? Schedule A, schedule?
I don't know. That looks, that looks like this.
It's got the table on it.
Breakdown. I think you are. And then it shows what our local, local funds are. You had already done the First Amendment for the previous amount.
Right.
All this is doing is an amendment to accept the increase of funds. And then there's a page right after it that shows the total federal cost and the local cost.
Does anybody else have anything? Seeing that there's no further discussion, thank you, Ron.
Could, could we expedite this, so I could make DOT happy? Sure.
Does anybody want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? For the expedition? Going once? All right. There's no second for?
Oh, I'll second, sorry.
Okay. All right, so motion to expedite by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Councilmember Kavanaugh. Take the role.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Rathmo.
Aye.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Dundon is absent. Council President Pro Tem Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Thank you. That is 5-0.
Thank you.
Ron, thank you. All right, moving on to RL 25-26, Considered in Public Works, with Councilmember Hotchkiss. We welcome down Josh Blody, the Acting Commissioner of Public Works. This is an ordinance to amend the 2024 general fund budget to adjust costs on shared maintenance agreement with Broom County. How's it going, Josh?
Good evening, everybody. Budget transfer to adjust for overages for the maintenance agreement between the city and Broom County, the Tribe Park type, we like to call it, for Government Plaza. The reason we're moving money is we did not receive bills for the end of 2023, and now we have to catch them up.
That's the end of 2023?
Or 24.
2023. They did not send us invoices for the third and fourth quarter of 2023 until late October of 2024.
Why? So the county didn't bill us, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and we, and we didn't catch it in finance. We usually try to go through all their accruals, but we missed it. So we had to pay some of the 23 budget out of the 24 budget out of this line, about $20,000. So that's why we need the additional funds.
So the, the overage actually happened in 2020, for expenses for happened in 2023?
Well, actually, if those bills would have come in in 2023, they would have been pretty much on budget. And then we would have been $6,000 under budget this year if we would have had regular bills.
Okay.
So that's why we need this, this funding.
And there's just, there's extra, there's, obviously, there's left, there's extra money in public works, the public works charges line that we're, that's just everywhere.
Yes, that's where we receive the garbage violations and and the other thing, what is it, garbage and, what else is in there? Oh, property cleanups.
Okay.
And we did very, very well in 2024, so.
All right. Is there, is there a formal agreement that's in writing somewhere about the shared maintenance?
Okay.
Does it have a part about when you're, when you're allowed to bill?
Sure, that, that I don't know.
Should be.
Wouldn't that be a?
Do you have a formal agreement? It doesn't necessarily say billing times and things like that, but I do have a billing agreement between us and them, yes.
Okay.
But it doesn't specify, specify a timeframe?
It says quarterly.
Quarterly?
They're not keeping up with it, though.
Yeah.
You can send it up if you want us to take a look at it.
Okay.
I'll motion expedite.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, the motion to expedite by Councilmember Kavanaugh, seconded by Councilmember Matavetsky, will the clerk take? Oh, is there any discussion on the expedition?
I'm just shocked that they, like, took so long, like, I can't get over that part. But it's really crazy that it took that long to get it, to get it.
I agree. Any further discussion? All right, will the clerk take the, take the vote?
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Rathmo.
No.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
No.
Council, Councilmember Dundon is absent. Council President Pro Tem Hotchkiss.
Aye.
It's 3-2.
Motion passes, right? Because that's?
I don't, is it a motion of?
Majority of who?
Majority present, majority sworn in, major, we got a lot of?
So, motion expedite does not pass because it needs the majority of the full body. Okay.
Can we ask some more questions? I just, can I ask? So now, what, I just want to know what's going to happen now, like, since it didn't pass, to be expedited, so what's going to?
They'll just wait longer for the payment.
Okay, well, okay, fine. I would have voted no, too.
Which is fine.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. The snooze, you took over a year, so that's fine. But you still want to make sure that you pay correct, but not in a rush.
I didn't say that.
Okay.
Okay. So expedition didn't pass, but it'll still move forward if it gets the signouts it needs. I think that's all we have for this. So thank you, thank you, Josh. Thank you, Chuck. Moving on to RL 25-20, Considered in Employees, with Councilmember Matavetsky, and presenting with the Director of Personnel, Kent Drake-Dries.
Welcome.
Hello, how we doing?
Doing all right. So I guess we'll just start with having you give an overview.
All right, this would be a, an RL to continue the responsibility adjustments that were issued last year due to the vacancy in the DPW Commissioner position. That position has been advertised, or? One closer, one application, unqualified person, so that position remains empty. And so Josh and Fran from DPW are stepping up to covering most of those responsibilities, all of these, their own responsibilities. And Fran is also helping out with extra support for Josh, who is Superintendent of City Streets, while he takes responsibilities of the Commissioner's position. So everything is just kind of slid up for them, so it's a continuance of that situation, as we still do not have any viable candidates for the Commissioner position.
To clarify, so the, the one application from an unqualified person was in this entire window since April 2022, or just in the past year?
Yeah, yes to both, because it was the entire window, and it happened in this past year.
Okay. Um, what is being done to get someone into this position?
Right. So it's, it's been posted, it's been announced a couple of different times over the eight, eight months. So as with the things, it's difficult to pull candidates, because if you are somebody who's qualified for this position, and it's pretty considerable qualifications, you don't want to leave your job to take a job that you could just be dismissed from at the next election. So, because that's, you know, could, could easily happen to some. But if the mayor were to lose the election, for example, and they could, similar to me, could just be told, you. So it's not, not something that's a risk that a lot of people want to take.
Yeah, but it's a, it's a risk at any time, because even if there isn't an election, at any time, you're at the mayor's disposal for that job. So I don't, I don't honestly think that, like, the election is kind of something that should be in that format for that, because at any time, if you're, you, if you're a department head, at any time, you're at disposal, at disposal to the mayor, so I don't know.
I think the thinking? I think the thinking is that if the mayor hired me, then the mayor's at least committed to me for four years, or hopefully to their eight years. Uh, but in, in this situation, now, we're, you know, a year away or
But that wasn't the situation in twenty twenty-two.
Right, right.
That's the situation we're in now, but not in twenty twenty-two.
Now, well, in twenty twenty-two, it was advertised, it's important to point that out, too, but, uh, you know, the interim solution then was for Dan Merkel, who was, who had retired. He decided to come back and fill it. So it was also one where we had somebody filling the role, um, who, you know, who did
Switch the mic. I think that one's dead.
And, and so, I, I think, again, makes it difficult when somebody who's in there, and he had been in there for a while. So then, it, you know, it's not a glaring, uh, hole. So it's really only been empty in this way since just early last year.
Is the city saving money by not having this position filled?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, I guess, the follow-up question that I'd like to ask is what work's not getting done?
Um, well, I couldn't really speak to the specifics of that, because there's so many responsibilities, uh, you know, of the, of the commissioner position and the city streets and the first, um, assistance commissioner. So, um, to my, to my knowledge, it's pretty much, uh, all getting done. It's a question of how much time can be attributed to it and, and you know, so, you know, Josh or Fran can probably speak more eloquently about how that's being handled.
Um, I had another question. Would they ever think about changing it to, like, management-tested, that department heads?
What we did, we just did with the treasurer?
Yeah.
Uh, that hasn't come up.
I was just thinking, maybe, might be able to retain, if, if that is a problem, I'm not sure, like, retaining department heads, that might be something to kind of think about.
Mm-hmm.
To retain them.
Yeah, I just, I, I, I can't imagine that there's not important work that isn't, is just not
Yeah.
um, without someone dedicated.
Could be, I couldn't name it, though.
Okay, anyone, anyone else? Um, you have a request, a request to expedite, um, but there was not a reason given on the form?
Yeah, that's, uh, again, just for the continuance and the, you know, for finance to get all that retroactive stuff taken care of, similar with all the other uh, retroactive increases that, uh, that go on, otherwise it plays out forward.
Could we, I'm sorry, just another question. Could we just, uh, could we eliminate the commissioner position altogether, since it hasn't been filled in so long? And just give the, you know, just give the salary adjustments to the people that are handling it and put that?
I mean, yeah, I guess, especially if no work is not getting done, that we can't define what we're losing, and we're saying we're saving money. It seems.
Right, well.
Well, it's still being held, like, on the budget for it, but, like, we could put it back into
Contingency.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's something you could look at, but as I said, I'm not an expert in those matters, so I can't really speak eloquently about what is or is not being done.
Why not?
So, you know, it, it may be worth taking a look at to see, uh, and what that is exactly, but, um, yeah, I don't think anything's, nothing wrong with looking at just about anything.
So, um, so you've made a request for exp- uh, expediting, the continuance is for finance to get their paperwork in order.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is there a reason that this is coming to us now, rather than at the previous work session, so that it wouldn't have to be expedited?
Um, I'm not sure what the reason for that would be.
Like, I mean, in terms of making sure council has the time to look at it and, and all of that, you know, we try to not expedite things when possible. So I've just kind of, like, why? What was the cause for it basically coming to us late? If it's, if it's, if there's a request for expedition, that means that there is something that caused things to be late on the executive side. And, right? You see what I'm saying? And oftentimes, there's a cause, you know.
Right. I can't tell you.
The county here, whatever.
Right, right, there was a snowstorm that day or something. No, yeah, I can't tell you what that is.
Thank you. Alright.
Yeah, I guess my, it's not really a question, I just, I think I'm frustrated that we haven't been able to fill that position in over a year. Um, and it seems, it strikes me that, uh, Mr. Plutie would be qualified or could get more training to be qualified if there's some, something lacking about his experience. Um, but the, the barrier being that there's a a political, um, part of the equation in just like filling a position is kind of, uh, that's frustrating to, because I think that needs, that position needs to be filled.
I just, since you brought it up, councilman, I just wanted to, I guess, take the opportunity to point out that, um, I, I, our office believes that Josh is qualified for that position, um, in a permanent capacity, not in an acting capacity. Um, and his acting status is not a reflection on, um, the, our opinion on the department's performance. It is, it, the reality of it is, Josh is an employee, has been an employee of the city for more than twenty years. And, um, kind of the risk that Ken outlined of taking a job that hinges on who wins the election in November is not, I don't think a risk he's willing to take.
Open before the election, so it's been open since twenty, it's been open for over a year.
I think that's kind of the nature of these positions. It's always a risk for people to take them, department heads.
Yeah, but with one, but with one application, it kind of looks like, alright, we're just leaving it open, and like, we're not really doing anything with it. That's kind of what it, it looks like, you know, granted, like, I'm grateful for Josh, like, I know that they come out and they clean the streets, like, I, I'm, I'm grateful for the things that they're doing. But I'm just saying, to have that position open, there, there hasn't been any, like, um, active, you know, someone actively looking, you know, to fill that position, I feel like, with one application.
Yeah, I think we agree that this is definitely not a long-term solution, and hopefully after, um, by the end of the year, after the election, there'll be a more, people will be more interested in, in that role, including Josh.
I don't, I honestly don't think, uh, I, I don't think it should be, like, the election, you know, I know it, it, it is at the, the mayor's disposal, but I just, I just feel like that's still not, I don't know.
I, I don't disagree with you at all that, I, I wish we had people that were interested in taking it in a permanent capacity, but I just wanted, to your point, to make sure on the record that, um, I, I don't, I'm not sure that in my time with the mayor's office, DPW has ever been running as smoothly or efficiently as it is now. I'm sure that there are things that Josh would tell you, like, if we had that position filled, here's what could get done, and here's what I'd like to do. I think every department head has that in some capacity. Um, but in terms of, like, snow removal, paving, like, what we hear from residents, um, about, you know, just what's going on on their streets, it seems to be operating the best it has been in recent years, and that's solely a credit to Josh and to Fran in those positions.
Of course, like, I, like, I know that, like, the snow and every, everything, you know, I've never had an issue, like, with, um, you know, snow or paving in, in my district too much, but the, like, the main thing of what I'm, like, trying to get at is, if that is an issue where, like, people are saying it's too risky, then we got, we really have to come to the table and figure out a different way on how we hire department heads, because, like, you're not gonna, and even someone, just someone in that capacity and in that role, they're gonna be ner-, you're not gonna be able to do the work that you need to get done, because you're worried constantly that at any moment, you're going to be fired by the mayor. So if that's, like, kind of a, a way that, you know, we, you know, we can get good quality department heads, we might want to think about changing the way that's done.
Right, I don't think anyone on the body is questioning Josh's capacity or his work, but I think we are stating it does seem like a poor excuse for a lack of strategy in filling a position that has been open for almost three years.
Yeah, I don't think it's an excuse as much as it's just the reality of the people that would consider these positions, and I would encourage you to ask Josh directly, his, you know, his feelings on moving into a role in a permanent capacity like that. Um, and I, I didn't think council was questioning, I just wanted to make sure that our, our administration was on the record as, as fully supporting the, the work that, that these two, uh, employees have done so far.
And in terms of the actual strategy, so if, if we talk more recruiting strategy, um, that, obviously, it's posted on the city's webpage, it's on Indeed, uh, it's on ZipRecruiter. Uh, you know, there's been shoulder tapping and the, the typical kind of, uh, bringing that up to, to folks who, who might be qualified, but again, it's, you know, a kind of unique set of skills, uh, that one must have, uh, to, to take on these positions. So there, there, there's just not a tremendously large candidate pool.
The posting doesn't have, like, a salary range on it. I presume that's because we won't know the applicant's actual skill set until they apply, but, um, is, what I, one would think a posting with a salary that's commensurate to the experience required, um, and the vulnerability of the position, um, being posted with it might attract people in a way that no salary information posted. I, I don't know what the rule, I'm new to the employees committee, um, but I, I don't know, I just, that was something that jumped out to me when I was, when I was looking at the, uh, city postings.
The salary is in the budget, so I'm not sure that there's anything, I'm sure we could add that to the posting, just as, as it is listed and approved in the budget.
Yeah, it, it used to be, and I'm not sure why it came off, to be honest with you. But, but we could add it, but you know, that might be attractive and maybe deterrent, you're right, it may, may, may not. Uh, that, that's, that's craps you, for sure. Yeah.
Okay. Well, we, we ready to move on?
Request for expedition.
Is there a motion to expedite?
With, yes, there was a motion to expedite, I would say, from what I'm understanding with, maybe the deputy mayor, now that you're up here, um, an explanation for why this didn't come to us the previous work session, um, to, which would have removed the need for an expedition.
Yeah, I think it was just flagged for us that this is a responsibility adjustment that existed through twenty twenty-four and needed to be extended into twenty twenty-five. If council wants to, I don't think there's a real need to expedite it, it just kind of allows us to get, from an administrative standpoint, caught up um, on the retroactive nature of it, but if council has further questions or, you know, I, I understand, too, I don't know why it didn't come to the first work session. That's, that's on me.
Yeah.
So does anyone want to make the motion expedite? Seeing that there's no motion, um, we'll move forward, and we'll just have this go to the next, not the next business meeting, but the following business meeting. Um, so, thank you, thank you both, and we're going to move on to RL twenty-five dash twenty-one, considered in planning with council member Rathmel. And welcome down Tito Martinez to be our presenter.
Hi, Tito, welcome. So this is RL twenty-five dash twenty-one, an ordinance to amend chapter four-ten zoning. To clarify and correct text and to add context, your executive summary identifies the legislation is to correct topographical errors, remove text that was meant to be removed by previous amendments, input text accidentally omitted by previous amendments, and add clarity to certain sections without substantive changes to the ordinances. Anything additional you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, the only other thing would be to make some minor changes that would help with, um, enforcement and to update some language based on changes to the way New York State uh, defines and regulates things. Um,
Can you identify which are the enforcement pieces?
Uh, yeah, sure, so, um, I have a list here. So, so if I could just take a step back real quick, tho- those things you laid out intent up. And when we got to the moving, that's not supposed to be, am I cutting in and out?
Yeah.
So when we got to the, um, the removing text, uh, part, we found in the online versions of the zoning code, a ton of text, uh, mainly the definitions that had been removed by legislation in two thousand nineteen, but at some point between then and now, it was put back into the published version of the code. So, so, uh, there's a lot of red text in this amendment. Most of it is not an actual change, it just represents stuff that's not supposed to be there. Um, for those things, we technically don't need legislation, because these are terms that aren't supposed to be there, that were uploaded by accident, it, it seems like. Um, but when I was drafting this, the two thousand nineteen legislation was not in the digital files, and I didn't want to go to IT and ask them to change a bunch of language, a lot of language in the code, without having, um, legislation to back it up.
Do you know which twenty nineteen legislation you're referring to?
Yes, and actually, the, the city clerk was able to help me out today and, uh, found, found the hard copy of that legislation. Um, I don't remember the ordinance number right now.
It was oh nineteen dash one five seven.
That one. Um, I do still think it would be probably cleaner and more straightforward to include all corrections in this amendment, meaning the stuff that's actually new and the stuff that represents sort of the editing of the online version. And just presenting what the final product should look like. But.
Could you also speak to the, so you explained removed by previous, meant to be removed by previous amendments?
Yep.
And then accidentally omitted by previous amendments, which?
So, uh, that, that part that was accidentally omitted was, uh, a time limit on yard sales. So, um, that's, that's something that was requested by the zoning officer. Uh, he had received complaints or has over the past couple of years about yard sales that are permanent or semi-permanent, and he has no way to really enforce against that. A couple iterations ago, there was a three-day limit to yard sales in the code. Um, so we're trying to put that back in. I, I can summarize what the actual new stuff is that we're proposing here, if that's helpful.
Yeah, can we get a list?
Yeah.
Of those, like, I, I, I just would like some time to digest, and like, there's another thing that I caught with, was the, uh, if you have a home-based business, um, basically, you can't store your product in your garage anymore under this.
Yeah, so that, that's, that's one of those state things. So I, I'll just go really quickly, there's only a couple items, so what's actually new is the definition of, of cooperative housing per councilman Kavanaugh's request. A requirement that fences have to be maintained in good condition.
Wait, I'm sorry, I actually have, uh, so I don't take definition or issue with the definition of cooperative housing itself, but I am curious why, for the purp-, and I'm quoting now, for the purposes of this chapter, this use shall be considered a condominium, condominium, because co-op housing and condominiums are not one and the same. It's a difference in ownership.
The, yeah, they have different ownership structures, uh, but like a lot of land uses in this code, there's a sort of an umbrella term, and then there are uses that fall into that term. The purpose of that is to simplify the list of allowed uses in a given zoning district, to not have to cut down on the number of listed uses there, and so there are other uses that, for the purposes of zoning, you know, an example being a bowling alley. Bowling alleys aren't listed anywhere as an allowed use, but for the purposes of this chapter, a bowling alley shall be considered indoor recreation, and then that is allowed in certain districts and that.
It's not exclusive, it's inclusive. Is that the correct way to consider it?
Yeah, I would think so. It, it's, the, the purpose of that, combining the two, is just so that when you're looking at the allowed uses in the R-one, R-two, R-three, for example, it says condominium, and it just sort of streamlines that process, uh, rather than listing in all of the same districts, both condominiums and cooperative, uh, housing, because, uh, as a matter of sort of how, a, a matter of practice, how we receive the applications for those different uses, how they're reviewed, there's no difference. Um, so the first one is the definition of co-ops. Uh, second is the requirement that fences have to be maintained in good condition, uh, to help with the zoning officer with enforcement of that. The time limit on garage sales, again, to help with enforcement. Um, and then, uh, changes to daycares, home occupations, and some obsolete language regarding disabilities, those are based on changes in how New York State defines and regulates these things. To answer your question about, uh, the home occupations, in the, uh, the state residential code, it says that the home occupations have to be contained within the primary structure. So that's something that we had to change to reflect the state regulations on that.
Can we get what you're reading from to represent all of that, or a summation of such?
Yes.
Thank you.
You mean my notes or what I?
Just something formal that identifies the distinction between each of the reasons provided.
And this is, I mean, minor, but do we have to adopt that state definition?
I, yeah, I believe so, yeah, that, that state, that residential code that enables home occupations, I would think we would have to, to follow what the state does, I, there may be a process where we could pass our own local law to do something different. But those changes, as far as the square footage of the house that can be dedicated to the business, the fact that it has to be contained in the primary residence, all those things are state, are state regulations. And I could provide that.
Yeah, I would, I'm just, I'm curious, I mean, the states are already telling you what you can store in your garage.
I mean, the reality is, if you were, I don't know what, what the home business would be, but.
I don't know, I, whatever, you're selling widgets.
Sticking in those legging businesses, multi-level marketing.
Yeah, if you're an Amway salesperson, right, you're, you're selling protein powder, I don't know. I can store it in my house, but not in my garage, I don't know. It's a small point, but it's just like.
I, I think the intent of that really is that the, the, the primary activities of that home business are supposed to be contained in, in your residence. If you had a couple of things in your garage that you use for your business, but you weren't conducting business activities in your garage, I don't think, you know, the zoning officer would have an issue with that.
Tito, what, so you just caught all of these, there were amendments, they, they were omitted, or they showed back up? What is the protocol? And if protocol doesn't exist, what will be the strategy to ensure that something like, that like, that we don't get six years down the road and look back and see the same thing?
I guess, you know, we could do some sort of, I don't know, buy in.
General code.
General code.
I can answer, I can answer that, general code, or whatever company wins the RFP. Do not have that yet, it is, but that's, yes, we do not have that yet.
These are the exact reasons why we want it, though.
This is a pretty glaring example, I mean, big chunks of, of zoning definitions that have been not properly published in five years.
The weird thing is that the, uh, stuff that was added to the code since then, for the most part, is there.
Interesting.
But the stuff that was supposed to be removed, I'm pretty sure when the legislation first passed, it was not on the online versions. And at some point, through the various zoning amendments that have happened since then, maybe somebody took an old copy or something, uh, as a template or as sort of a shortcut, and accidentally put stuff from an older version online. I don't know really how it happened, um, but just trying to fix it.
Well, I mean, again, hopefully the recertification process will catch this, but is there any chance that there's other stuff? Did you, did you do a sort of any cursory search to see if there's other stuff that got missed?
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we went through the, the whole code and tried to make sure that, that this is going to correct all of these issues, uh, it's possible we missed something, I mean, but I think we got it all.
Any idea if other departments are doing the same?
I'm not sure, but, I mean, we do a lot more amendments, it seems like, than other departments to, to the ordinance that we work with, um, so I think we had a higher chance of this happening.
Is there anything else? All right. Thank you, Tito.
Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have RL 25-22, Considered in Planning, with the council member Rathmel, and we welcome down Steve Carson.
Hi, Steve. So this is RL 25-22, a resolution amending R24-99 and O24-114 to reflect necessary changes. This is somewhat convoluted, could you untangle it, please?
Okay, so I do apologize, first off, I just want everyone to understand, this is not, there's no new cuts here.
Okay.
So this is, what happened was originally the RL that was sent down had a, the, what's in your packet, uh, what was the correct amounts to apply? And then somehow, a earlier draft version of the, of the adjustments was, ended up getting sent down, and then that was attached, and I didn't catch it until after the legislation was approved. So this, uh, the first part, just changing the service programs, um, if you, I don't know if the, um,
Steve, do you want me to weigh in on this?
Yeah, go for it.
Looked at this at length, so really, the first four pages of the RL are going to be what you're going to want to look at, the rest of it's just additional information. So last year, um, when we passed 2450 and 2499, if you're looking at the resolution, which is pages two and three, unfortunately, there was just the wrong attachment, decreasing funding for the wrong agencies. So this resolution seeks to correct that and reallocate the money, take it away from the agencies we meant to, give it back to the ones that it shouldn't have been taken from, and attached as page three the five areas where funding is going to have a different effect. So that's the resolution correcting where the money allocations are going. Um, and I think Dr. Burling was here at the work session, and I think some things got lost in translation, so that's just a correction of that resolution. Pages four and five, um, in this RL are an ordinance, literally the only correction is adding 64 cents. So it goes from $10,615, as reflected in O24114, to $10,615.64. For auditing and accounting purposes, that 64 cents is important. And that's it.
Where does the HUD program income calculation piece come in that's represented in one of the previous RLs?
Okay, so, um, the way, okay, so when it comes to your service programs that you can, uh, or the, the service program cap, you have a 15% of your entitlement and 15% of your projected program income. We had a projected program income using one method, which HUD approved, and then HUD told us after the fact, no, we use this different calculation for this one specific determination of how much service funding you can have. And because of that, they were like, you have to reduce your service program. Uh, their methodology, I don't think is very fair, I think it's, 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 it's a bad idea, whatever policy it is, it's a bad idea the way they do it. So, um, that was what, basically, we, we had to reduce the amount of program income, or we had to reduce the amount of service funding based off the estimated amount of program income. And to do that, we had to take a, a specific amount away, which was $31,800, oh, yeah, sorry, see, I'm looking at the wrong one, $31,846.89.
So the reduction itself wasn't the, when you say like somehow it didn't get presented correctly, the reduction itself outside of your control?
Correct, yes.
Not a result of, okay.
Yeah, and then the, the individual breakdowns, uh, the mayor's office made a determination, programs that were funded over $10,000 would be the ones that would take the hit, and then basically evenly distributed across those.
Is there any reason, something, go back to CDAC? Or, so you, you mentioned the mayor's office made that decision?
There's no, there's no requirement for it.
I know.
So that's, it's, nothing came to my mind, the mayor didn't say anything about it, uh, to send it back to CDAC to reevaluate it. It's still essentially, I mean, they made a recommendation for the budget, the mayor took that, mayor took that recommendation, made whatever adjustments he chose, and then this is an adjustment to the mayor's adjustments, so. No agency other than, uh, the Urban League for its TAN Technology Center, and the Park Rangers was fully funded, or fully funded according to the, the original budget, but all the others were just even distribution. How much do you have, divide by X number of agencies, take that off each agency, and there were some pennies that had to be corrected in there as well, which is reflected in this.
So the idea is this is not going to happen again because we are now going to be operating off of correct formulas from HUD?
I've, I've talked to the mayor about this, uh, we're, we're, we're going to definitely fix it going forward, uh, to not have this situation again. I still have to determine, you know, at what, the thing is, the program income you use is a moving target. So if you're trying to take a percentage at a certain point in time, at what point do you say that's the point in time? And that's the trick with it, you can't just, you can't get, you can guess, but if, when they run their calculation, your guess is too high, this happens. And that's the unfortunate part, so it's, it's, like I said, I do not like that, I don't like the rule, I don't like the regulation, I, I think they're just being mean, but that's just me.
There, ask a more general question about, um, HUD and like preparations, and thing the city's doing with HUD being under new direction?
I mean, what specifically?
In terms of like planning and thinking about if, if cuts come down the line.
Oh, um, we, um, so HUD actually came down, or HUD rep came down a few, a few weeks ago, and we did talk about them with that, and they, they basically registered us, you know, look, this is, this, these kinds of situations come up before, and generally HUD doesn't, HUD, HUD almost every year kind of gets put on the chopping block, and then everyone realizes it's valuable to everyone, and it gets taken off the chopping block. Can I absolutely guarantee, no, I can't guarantee anything. Um, we're working as if everything is normal and no changes are going to occur. Obviously, if changes occur, then we have to react to them, and that'll be up to CDC, the mayor, COC, everybody that's involved with this, obviously city council as well.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else on this RL?
I mean, I'll ask the.
Go ahead.
Same question I, I asked Dr. Burling, who didn't have some of the specifics, um, there's, on one hand, it's fair to say, okay, we're going to reduce everyone over $10,000 by kind of a, you know, a broad brush.
Yeah.
Equal amount, but are there organizations on here that this particular pot of funding is more crucial to, more important to, that, that maybe are notwithstanding that cut?
Um, I, I can't really make a qualitative assessment of the agencies. Um, as two people here who've been on CDC with me, I will not, never make budget recommendations, I don't ever reflect, I don't ever adjust the budget, that's not, I can't, um, it's up to CDC, the mayor, uh, the COC, and of course, city council determine if certain agencies or certain programs or certain, um, uh, target groups need to have services more than any other. I mean, that's, that's the entirety point of the annual action plan process.
That's, and that's why I asked if it had gone back to CDAC, I think members who are involved, not only in the in-person interviews of applicants for this extremely limited pot of, of funding, because of the time spent by CDAC members in parsing out sometimes $200, what agencies are getting, rather than that being a mayoral determination, to me, it makes sense to kick it back to the folks who are most familiar with those agencies in the budget line item. So I think if this is something that, and again, understanding that the program income limit or income calculations may continue to be outside of your control, uh, I think anything that's involving that ESG, CDBG, home budget needs to go back to CDAC.
Is this holding up actual checks going out to agencies?
Yes.
And another issue is that the agencies are aware of this, and there are agencies that are not getting what they're supposed to get right now because it was not apportioned the way that it should have been.
There are agreements on my desk that I can't, I can't move ahead with until the, the final number is determined. Now, they all, they all, they all get, um, the contracts are dated from September 1st, so if they've been accruing expenses, um, they still can get them once the, the thing is passed, but, um, if, um, there's a cutoff, I think, end of February, where it becomes problematic to fund a previous year resource, a previous, previously spent funds in the previous year.
Anybody else?
So, motion to expedite.
I'll second.
A motion to expedite by council member Medovetski, second by council member Middleton. Will the clerk take the role? Is there any discussion on the expedition? Excuse me. Seeing that there's none, can you take the role?
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Rathmel?
Aye.
Councilmember Medovetski?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunin is absent, council president Pro Tem Hotchus.
Aye.
Thank you, that's 5-0.
All right, thank you.
And then, I'm, sorry, I always, I always, stuff always pops in my head, so then, now that this is voted on, it's going to be expedited, uh, for Wednesday, when will people start to see their, when will the checks will go out right away after this?
We have to have the agreements executed, and so, once we have the full agreements executed, um, I mean, obviously it takes a few days for, once we get them back, it's got to go through legal, got to get the mayor's signature. Um, I can, I can have Shannon possibly ask everyone, uh, and a few agencies have this, go ahead and submit your billing that you're going to expend, you know, go ahead and submit that to us, and we'll have it ready to go. Um, but then, once the agreements are executed, we can process payments. And from the time we start processing payments, it's usually between one and three weeks for the checks to go out, depending on the, where it falls on the, the timeline.
So we won't be in trouble with February, you said, like?
I don't think so, I don't, I think we'll be okay.
Okay, so why, I mean, so we did this, we did, we did this a month ago, why do we take another month to find the mistake?
Sorry? Oh, um, because I don't always, I don't look at the legislation that gets passed generally.
Yeah, no, why would, why would people look at the?
Well, I mean, I send, I send this, it's one of those, I submitted, I've submitted what I submitted, and I assume that that's what get passed, um, unless somebody tells me there's a modification or something like that, so I didn't notice it until after the fact, and one of the agencies that was affected let me know, oh, they're, look, this is, this says this, why are you reducing it, and so I said, okay, let's look into it, and that's when I found out that the error had occurred.
To address your issue with payments, CDBG, home, and ESG funds are multi-year funds, so you do not have to expedite. The only thing is, is I need the invoices to accrue those expenses back that occurred between September 1st and December. I can do that up until basically the middle of March, until I finalize the AFR, so quicker the better, but it does not have to be expedited.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so just for reference.
Thanks, it's
confusing.
We'd expedited it, though.
Yeah, it already went, I was expediting.
Thanks, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move on to the next RL, um, Steve, you can stay right there.
Okay.
Um, we're going on to RL 25-29, Considered in Municipal and Public Affairs with Councilmember Middleton.
Uh, RL 24-29, it's a resolution authorizing an agreement with homeless services agencies. Can you just talk about that?
Yeah, so, um, the, um, we went through and we found some unspent funds. Yeah, so, um, the, um, we went through and we found some unspent funds, uh, uh, in, that use ESG funds. Now, ESG funds are funds for homeless homelessness. Um, and the mayor, um, you want to talk, yeah, if you want to go for it.
Um, yeah, so I'll give an overview and then kind of the nitty gritty, I'll kick to Steve, but, um, so the, the gist of this RL is, um, it's approximately $81,000 in unspent ESG funds, uh, going to local homeless service, uh, agencies. Um, the bulk of the funding you'll see in your packet is earmarked for ACBC, um, to support an ex, uh, expansion of their hours, uh, at their warming center on Shenango Street. The warming center has been operating, uh, five days a week currently at limiting, uh, limited hours. Um, and this funding will hopefully help the center expand the hours that they're able to, uh, to be open and accept walk-ins during code blue in the wintertime. Um, something that was identified as a gap in services, just as part of ongoing discussions between the mayor's office and the, the, uh, homeless service agencies. Um, uh, homeless service, service agencies providers. The remaining funding, about $32,000, will go to three other, um, organizations, also homeless service providers, uh, to support, uh, rapid rehousing, homeless prevention services, uh, things like short-term rental assistance or security deposit assistance um, to FEN, uh, VOA, what was the third one?
Uh, it's the HMIS expansion through ICA.
I had a, I have like so many questions.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so why, how come we weren't made aware? Like, how did, how did that money come up? Like, I just, were you going to say something?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm like
Oh.
across from here agreeing with you.
Oh, yeah, I'm just like
The mind meld.
So yeah, Steve can get into this more, but the unspent funds come about when an agency doesn't use all of its funding. Sometimes it's multiple agencies that are not spending all the funding that was allocated to them, or one fund, one agency was funded and was just unable to complete the project or provide the services that they were given money for.
Which year were the unspent funds found from?
I do not have that in front of me, but it's probably over the last five or six years. I don't know specifically which agency that didn't spend their funds. Cause once we close the PO, we close the PO.
This is just sort of like a regular thing that happens. Steve will go through and check in on our contracts, the invoices that we've, we've received to kind of do an audit of what money's been spent, uh, which contracts are completely closed and is there funding left over so that this money isn't out there for years and years, which in going back 10 years or so, there was quite a bit of money that was.
So if it's a regular thing, why would we be going back five to 10 years to identify or all of a sudden discover unspent funds?
I think it, it happens on a rolling basis. So the agencies are spending the money that's allocated to them in the time period that the contract allows. So Steve is kind of always, and correct me if I'm wrong, but Steve is kind of always looking through to see, um, what's been allocated, what's been earmarked, what's been spent down and what's remaining.
And then the last major one we did was a few years ago when we had the sunset funds.
Right.
Um, uh, we, we were going to do some capital projects, but several of those fell apart unfortunately.
I'm sorry, can I, I think I interrupted your question.
You're, 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 you're asking the questions that are, no, that's fine. Go ahead.
Um, so again, and I'll ask the same thing, were, how were eligible, you mentioned a gap in services with ACBC. How were eligible agencies made aware of the unspent funds and did CDAC have the opportunity to review?
So I went to the COC and said, we have, so basically, um, the, the warming center was the one that was, was, was desired because of, of, of whatever, the particular needs that were seen there. So in order to fund that, for every $3 you spend on an activity like that, you have to spend $2 on some other activities. So I went to the COC and said, we have this pool of money. Um, why don't we, uh, we ask for applicants that can meet these criterias of the $2 eligible activities, rapid rehousing, homelessness prevention and HMIS. And so the COC did open applications. Um, we formed a committee, uh, the, it was in the NOFA Subcommittee that did it. Um, they, we gave them a few weeks to fill in applications. They submitted them, the NOFA Subcommittee reviewed them, uh, and then made essentially those recommendations for those specific activities. Uh, we did not go to CDC with it.
Could I ask a couple of specific questions about the applications submitted and the use of funding? And so for VOA, to my knowledge, this rapid rehousing will be a new program for VOA.
I believe they've been doing rapid reha, they themselves may not have been doing rapid housing, they're doing rapid rehousing through, um, the COCs, I think had rapid rehousing money.
My understanding is they have the shelter GPD and permanent supportive housing.
But I mean, I thought they were moving clients out of their shelters and using rapid rehousing through. So they may have not been doing RR themselves, but they had been participating with RR with other providers, I thought.
Right, but if they're operating now the rapid rehousing program, you know, if they, and that's new, do you know if they intend to continue beyond this allocation and continue to apply for ESG funding? Cause that bucket is super limited.
Yeah, we'll have to see going forward. Um, I actually would like if they did because, um, that whole three to $2 thing is a very important deal. And the $2, the $2 side of it is generally only one agency and, uh, I don't like that. I like to have at least more than one agency on that side of things.
Okay, with ICA.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and to be clear, I mean, I'm not at all against any, I'm not thrilled by the process, but not at all against the funding allocations. The needs are certainly well represented. With ICA, so love a learning management system for HMIS, love the electronic collection for pit data, like that's been necessary, I think for some time. Can all of that be done in Acovia? Is that their plan?
And, and, oh, I think there are two different software comp, packages they were looking for. One was the portal and one was the online training, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do, but there, one is a total of 8,000. So do you, are they opting for one and not the other?
I, I don't have that information unfortunately.
I think that's the, that would be my, like, their application was pretty personnel heavy.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if we have a way to ensure that they're not spending it on personnel, but are in fact spending it on the services.
Okay.
That they, uh, I mean, I show our gaps in training infrastructure, I just.
I, I've, I sent them off an email today for a clarification on another matter. If you email me, let me, and then I can forward it right onto them and ask them.
Okay.
This is not being requested to be expedited, I don't believe. So.
Do you think it's appropriate to have an audit of the, like HUD funds that haven't been spent? Just so that we have a full understanding, or the stuff that maybe came back or?
Are you talking about official, there is a, there is official audit done every year, the single audit that's required under federal regulations.
Okay.
So you're just talking about, about asking for unspent older funds?
Yeah.
I mean, we, we do have like little sections here and there and, and we try to clean them up sometimes when we spot them. Um, I don't think we've ever done a full overhaul of everything. Um, that's something we potentially could do. It's gonna, it's gonna take some time and effort for that, but I'm not against that.
I think part of the it goes beyond just one department. And I think having a representation of what remains unspent, I mean, cause we're just the number of RLs that we end up receiving to go back to either, either an over budget line, um, or a transfer for something that was miscalculated.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't, like, this is not at all the first time that clarification of that process has been requested. So if at some point, and I'm not looking at you, Stephen, for this one, Megan, that would be more something to continue to reiterate at the executive level.
Sure.
You got anything else for this RL?
In going back and looking, is it, is there any sort of pattern to the funds that aren't getting spent? Is there any particular organization or type of organization or type of project that is habitually?
I, I don't know if there's a pattern per se. Some agencies simply will bite off more than they can chew in a year. Um, some agencies, um, will stop a program halfway through the year. Um, sometimes it, the agency is, uh, seeking other grant sources for a bigger project. And so they may sit on it for a while. Um, trying to think other reasons for it. Uh, they, these things can just accrue in the, in the, the CDBG and ESG and home budgets. Uh, we do try to, um, pull older funds first, so we don't have them sitting out there forever.
I guess I probably wouldn't know this off the top of your head, but I'm kind of curious how much, um, how it compares between the money that, that we're looking to allocate here to ACBC, um, compares to what they were going to get from the state for code blue when they were going to have an in-house, uh, warming shelter.
I, I don't have that information for the state grant unfortunately.
They had to return it.
Oh.
Cause they didn't get the planning.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, just moving money onto this, out of this pocket as opposed to from the state.
So anything else? All right. There's no expedition on that one, so we're going to move on. Thank you, Steve. I think that's, that's it for you. Uh, but we have RL 25-23, Considered in Planning with Councilmember Rathmel. And the presenter is our deputy mayor, Megan Heinman.
Yeah, this is RL 25-23, a resolution to accept 165,000 from NYSERDA's CEC program. Could you expound?
Yes, um, so this is, um, essentially funding for energy efficiency upgrades at various city-owned properties. Those addresses are listed on the RL. Um, this funding is available through NYSERDA's Clean Energy Communities Program, um, which allows, um, municipalities, as I understand it, to track their work on clean energy, um, and receive, uh, state funding in exchange for hitting certain milestones. So, um, the city submitted some of our recent, uh, achievements around things like the purchase of, um, uh, electric vehicles for the city fleet and EV charging stations. Uh, the energy performance audit, uh, LED streetlight conversion going back a few years now. Um, and that, uh, translated to, uh, a certain number of points, which translated to this funding from, from NYSERDA. Um, there's no local match required as part of this. Um, and planning and engineering will essentially work with Siemens, who helped us on the energy performance audit, um, to figure out which buildings to focus on and which, uh, energy efficiency upgrades make the most sense.
What happened with, I don't think we ever had to vote on that Siemens thing. So is that, this is like, is this inspired by what they had produced?
Yeah, I think
Being conducted by that?
I believe that is still, uh, with the attorneys, both for the city and Siemens to finalize the contract, but, uh, Siemens reported and performed an energy, um, audit of all city-owned buildings, um, in advance of that. So that's part, uh, this is part of that, that work.
Are we to expect that that's going to come back up soon?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, as soon as it, it's worked out with the, the attorneys. So they basically helped us identify this, this pot of money that was available and some of the eligible activities that the city had already done. Um, to, to receive this grant funding as part of their, as part of their work.
Did they actually do the application or was that all done by city staff?
Um, I'm not sure. I know the, uh, Siemens and Juliette, uh, Dr. Burling worked together on this. I'm not sure who submitted the application.
I, I think Dr. Burling has been putting a fair amount of time in on this. She's been talking about it frequently. And I think she brought down some of the, the detailed material at a planning, uh, committee meeting, if I remember correctly. Do you remember that?
Yes.
She did, yes.
So for all these little bits and pieces of things, it added up to the points for this, points for that, that add up to getting this. I, I originally thought she was hoping we were to get around 300,000, so.
Yes.
Although I think there's some things that are maybe ongoing.
That we have to wait for, um, project completion on and we'll continue to submit, um, as they're completed and I guess continue to accrue those points. Um, she also said, I think Dr. Burling was requesting expedition for this, um, just based on some of the timeframe set by NYSERDA. Um, and so we can get to work more quickly on this, but since she wasn't able to be here today, she said it's not imperative if, if council has questions and they want to, to follow up with her on this, it can go to the, uh, not the next business meeting, but the one after.
There's no other questions? Is there a motion to expedite?
I mean, I'll motion expedite. I mean, we're, we're accepting grant money. I don't.
I'll second.
Serious delay.
All right, the motion to expedite by council member Kavanaugh, second by council member Middleton. Any discussion on the expedition?
I would just add, if council does have questions, we can try to, we can get to you before Wednesday too, if, if that helps, if, if you're willing to expedite.
Okay. Um, seeing that there's no other discussion, will the clerk take the role or?
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Rathmel?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetzky?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn is absent. Council President Protem Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Thank you. That is five zero.
Motion passes. Um, and then we can move on to, thank you, Megan, and we'll move on to RL 25-24, Considered in Finance with Councilmember Kavanaugh, and welcome down Larry Harris, our treasurer.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's good to be here. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
So, um, the RL is proposing, um, an increase in the eligibility cutoff for water shut-off. Currently, per charter, it's $200. Um, recommendation is we move that up to in excess of $500. The, the basic motivation is we're trying to, um, allocate those resources to those higher value accounts. Um, and alleviate the burden on some of those residents who have the lower balance accounts. So the charter has been in place for $200 for a long time. Based on where we see the average water bill now is about $1,000. It's really increased. So from an efficiency standpoint, as we begin water shut-off in 2025, which will be April, really feel that we would better be served in looking at those accounts that are only over 500,000.
All right, thank you for putting together a nice, clear attachment with the math broken down and the effect that this would have as far as number of bills you're going after and not going after. And thank you.
You're welcome.
Very clear.
Did they, would, would you guys ever think about setting up like a payment plan?
Yeah, so that's a good, pardon me, that's a good question. So the way the process works is we do a 46-day late notice, 76-day late notice, and then 20 days before shut-off, we send out a notification, the resident has up till five days before shut-off to request a water hearing. And at the water hearing, that's where we could discuss a payment plan. So that, that is available to every resident.
Yeah.
I've, I've sat in one of those, if you have questions.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, no, I was just wondering. So the, the five days, so they, and once you ask for a water hearing, your water won't get turned, it won't get shut off.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And then we, we, you know, the clerk team, the team in my office, the clerks and myself do work directly with the residents, trying to, you know, work out payment arrangements, so to speak, and give them good guidance. We also refer them over to some of the public agencies for assistance as well.
What, what's the, uh, the column on your attached, that's percentage of A slash R?
Percentage of accounts receivable.
Yeah.
Correct.
Oh, so that's just the, the dollar.
Right, so those, so the, the bills under $200 is 168 of them. And that's only accounts for 1% of the, the amount. And if you, if you add the $500 level, you're at 588 bills and that's only collecting 6% of the money owed.
Correct.
So.
But where's the other 40 something percentage?
They're not late. That's, that's correct. Right.
Say that again?
They're not late.
Oh, okay. Oh man, we got a lot of late bills.
We're working on them.
Okay. Is, is this, is it like the year over year is the number of like late bills increasing? Do you know? Is, are we like, is our population falling further behind with water bills or?
So I would, I would say based on, I mean, I started in June, so based on what I can see from historical and, and I think Chuck might have way in, but I would say, how I would answer this, definite motivation, now that they know there is going to be shut-off in 2025, we started notifying people in November, December with late notices. And we've seen a lot of people making payments and calling into the office. So I think we've gotten people's attention. Um, I don't know if you want to speak. Um, I don't know if you want to speak to kind of the aging.
Yeah, um, I mean, I was acting treasurer in about in two thousand and eighteen when um another treasurer left. And back then, we were doing shut-offs and the shut-off is a very good process for getting payments. Although people will notoriously, some, we get in the notorious late painters. Um, and then just recently, when our previous treasurer left and I was a treasurer, uh, we weren't doing it because COVID had just ended. But there was a pro- program during COVID called LIWAP. Where a lot of the people who uh didn't pay got the relief. So we got a lot of payments through that. Now. It's been a long history since we haven't had shut-off, so um I think it's a good thing that we do start. Um, but yes, we did have a lot of shut-offs in previous years in the teens. Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, two thousand sixteen, seventeen.
Okay. And then I guess my other question would be if there's uh. This balance that's like outstanding, does that affect the? The amount that we're charging for water for everybody else kind of? Does that make sense? If we're, if we haven't been able to collect, does that affect the budget in a way where the water department has to increase the cost per gallon?
I'm I'm gonna defer to Chuck on that. I'm gonna say no, but I want to defer to, no, you're 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 correct. No, um. A- as long as, as long as we're billing the same amount of households, when we bill, we bill to the revenue account, the only thing we're mission is missing is the cash. So like he mentioned, accounts receivable, if our accounts receivable balance goes up, that means people aren't paying. And our accounts receivable has been increasing, so a shut-off will bring in more revenue, well, more cash. We've already got the revenue booked on the books, but it's in a receivable account. So basically, it's just a cash issue. Uh, and the sewer and the water fund have in the historically been needing cash to pay back a. What they call a loan or a due-to-do from to the general fund, who's been supplementing their fund for years. Actually, this, actually, the sewer fund is paid back. And then on top of that, with the tax roll, we do roll those to taxes. So for twenty twenty-five tax, we rolled about a million two in water sewer bills that were late. And were made whole by the county.
And that is a is a large amount in the pack from from previous years.
So I think to your point, it's the the the, I'll call it the aging of that is has gotten greater, so the dollar amount was larger from a role perspective.
Okay. Do you have something?
Yeah, I guess I'm I'm trying to piece it all together. So um during the. Uh, with the good cause legislation being discussed, a lot of landlords have been reaching out to talk about their problems. Um, and one of them has been um being on the hook for huge tenant water bills. Um, so. If I understand this, if we're, if you're re-engaging in water shut-offs. Then it's gonna make it more likely that people are gonna pay their water bills. Or at least that water bill won't continue to go u- up. Is that like, so you're?
Yes, correct.
So you're not gonna be looking at like two thousand dollar, three thousand dollar water bills?
I mean, consider our our schedule. Um, your first payments do forty-five days after your first bill, and then that's an eight percent penalty. For most people just allow thirty days. That's your normal bill for credit cards, any bill. So we allow forty-five days and then we allow another up to seventy-six days for a four percent penalty, and then that's when we start the shut-off process. But I think two and a half months was a pretty long time to allow you to pay for a water bill.
For non-owner occupied or residential rental housing. Essentially, I mean, non-working utilities could. Result in code identifying a property as uninhabitable for human occupancy. Has there been any discussion around a strategy to prevent displacement? If and when that occurs?
So so that is, that is part of the conversation with watering in code is yes, if if and we notify people that when we're notifying of the shut-off. That if the water's turned off, that could become a code violation in uninhabitable. But that's, that's the, I guess that's the nature of the shut-off.
Sure, but the unintended consequence would be the tenants are displaced. And if those tenants aren't the actual individuals responsible for the water bill, then we're forcibly removing folks.
We we do have tenants that actually are paying the water bill, so that doesn't happen, and we work directly with the tenants on that. We've had that situation.
What about for the tenants who won't be able to pay that water bill?
Yeah, I mean, we we, that would some conversation we'd have with corp counsel.
So there's not, it's in discussion, but there's not a strategy in place currently to identify an alternative. If a tenant is facing displacement because their housing has been deemed uninhabitable.
You mean an alternative to the shut-off? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is there a process by which a tenant can? Appeal?
So that that is, that would be up, say, subject to discussion with myself, corporate counsel and the water department. Yes.
And tenants would be made aware of that opportunity? Is there an advocate that could connect and liaise?
To pay? Yes, yeah. And Chuck was asking, the tenant is also able to come and request a water hearing?
Even if though that they're not responsible to pay the water bill, like it's not in their lease, they still can come and do a water hearing. And that uh and that would shut, stop the shut-off process, because they're the tenant.
But what if the water hearing goes wrong? Like, I honestly think that like some type of um payment plan or something kind of. Like I said before, maybe something like that kind of protect.
That's typically what comes out of a water, uh, out of the water hearings.
Correct.
Is that they, they have, yeah, I mean, at least from the one I observed, it was very, very brief and they got. Everyone was very happy when they left.
Right, every, right, every water hearing that I've attended, we've came out with a agreement on a payment plan.
I think I'm thinking of the folks who aren't necessarily going to have the time or capacity to show up. At a water hearing, um, I feel like we're putting the onus on tenants when what I'm asking is if there's a very specific strategy. Like, is there an advocate that could be identified or liaison that could be identified that whether it's even with. This would fall into eviction prevention, this would fall into homelessness prevention. So if we're funneling funds from ESG and we have partner agencies already. What I'm hearing is there's not been a strategy to address. Going out to tenants as opposed to just hoping that tenants will. Show up here, which doesn't happen often. It's very often going to be the ones who have the capacity to not only uh. Show up, but have some kind of disposable income. To pay that in our most vulnerable tenant households aren't going to have either.
Yeah, I I'll, we can have that conversation with the the water team. It's the water department, myself, code and corp counsel, so it's a good point.
Uh, I'm happy to be a part of that conversation.
Thank you.
Anything else from anybody? Okay, there's no, there's no expedition on this. So, thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Um, gonna move on to RL twenty-five dash thirty-two, again, considered in finance with council member Kavanaugh and Chuck Robinson, our comptroller.
Okay, good evening, Chuck.
Good evening again, everyone.
So do you want to, just as a quick refresher, take us through the bond timeline perhaps? And I think Corporation Counsel said before, I mean, they're gonna send us a a kind of a revised timeline or updated timeline for this year. Um, but.
I didn't, I did not get that, so.
Oh, uh, just give us a a quick timeline where we're at in the in the schedule.
Robert, I could, I mean, address that if you want, as far as like logistics, but I think Chuck is just more like.
Yeah, sure, if you, do you wanna?
Yeah. So, um, you know, every year we bond for certain projects that are. Gonna cost the city a lot of money. Um, and I know last year probably seems a long time away. So we were preparing an email, so this will all be in much more final form. Um, but for a brief overview, um. We, now that Chuck has submitted the bond RL with the proposed project and documents from bond council. Um, there has to be a hearing on the bond ordinance, um, which we would recommend set at Wednesday's meeting for February twelfth. Um, there has to be a public hearing and as well as secret review of the various projects. And then council can vote on it that night or whenever. Um, after it's voted on and passes, it has to be published in the newspaper and there's a thirty-day estoppel period.
Thirty or twenty?
Thirty.
Third?
So um, that'll all be fleshed out much more in the email, so don't hold me to that precisely, but that's the the gist of it. Um, and then if there are any questions you about the timing and publication, estoppel, everything, you you could let us know. Um, and I think this was discussed at length during the budget process too, as far as the variety of.
Right, and I I think we discussed all the projects pretty much at length too during the during the process too. And then like, like you said, this is just the authorization to go out and get a ban in in April.
To go out and do what in April?
To get a ban, a a bond um anticipation note. It's a, we usually do one-year notes for. A a certain amount of time and then we convert them to serial bonds later.
Let's see if I remember this right, but during the budget hearings, I feel like there was some discussion and we said we'd come back to it. Closer to the bond about Binghamton Plaza. Am I, am I remembering things right? In terms of discussions we kicked down the the road till now.
I thought that was in the budget.
Yeah, it's it's in the budget um under the the Capitol.
Department.
Uh, the Capitol far, I can't remember the department, but. I was raising the issue with it. Um. Basically, because there's. For me, there's a lot of uncertainty about like Binghamton Plaza and um how we're moving forward with that. Project. Um, that's why I was hesitant or didn't want it in the budget. Um, but that's. That's the refresher that I can give you. That's.
So the this.
I want to correct myself too. It may be twenty days. That's why I need to, let me send you the email.
That's fine.
So don't hold me to that, as I'm looking through the paperwork and I'll confirm with bond council before I send out a final email. I just didn't want to.
For the estoppel period?
Yes.
Okay, so. Item wise, which is on. Page. No. Tell me what page. Deep in the packet here, uh, schedule. Um, so there is the two million dollars in demolitions. Funding, which would be, I think, primarily targeted toward the Binghamton Plaza situation. Um, so Chuck, do you go? And get it one, you do one anticipation note for the full amount or no? You do it as needed, correct?
It's it's as needed, right. So so basically, for example, the Henry Street project.
Right.
That's what, a nine million dollar project?
Yep, nine and a half.
Yeah, we probably won't borrow but half of that this year and then do half of the next year, so we don't have the interest payment.
But council authorizes it as.
Correct, but you authorize it as a whole. Because if you don't authorize it as a whole, it creates problems for engineering to get their paperwork for any uh grants or what have you.
And the e- the detailed email that we should be expecting will also include details for each itemized project description.
That was shared as part of the uh budget process, but if. I can give an overview or that, there was one specific budget hearing where we sort of ran through most, if not all of them. And then if certain projects fell under certain departments, they spoke directly to it. But if you have questions on any of the projects, I can try my best to answer them.
Yeah, my email will be more the legal end of it, procedurally, local finance law requirements, voting, publication, and I have all the seeker stuff. So it'll be that. If there's anything additional that is needed, um, I think the mayor's office has more detailed information on the project.
Yeah, or if you just want to meet councilman, I know that you were um, you were non-council at at the time of the budget hearings. So I'm happy to just go over it too, if that's easier.
Any other questions at the moment?
I I think Chuck, uh, I haven't followed up with you about this, but back in the budget hearings, we were talking about the the bonds and and the city's total debt. And then you were, had spreadsheet that tracked that that I could look at.
Yes.
I haven't remembered to look at it, but now I'm reminded that I want to see it again.
Okay, no problem.
How, I think it's, I think it's good for perspective and our decision-making, especially when. Looking at another close to twenty million dollars. Um.
Sure.
That's fair, but I'll I'll follow up with you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, that is something that exists or that's something that you said you could get?
No, we, I I have, I have every bond schedule that I keep and and for the city for. For the next forty years. So I can put, it's all in a spreadsheet that. We keep track of.
Okay, so you have the.
Yes.
It does exist. Is that something, and this is, I guess, is that something that others have or no? Okay. Can we have access to it besides just councilmember Hotchkiss or?
Sure, yeah, it's, yeah, it's it's basically all in the budget, but each fund has its own section. But this is all together, so it's easy to read.
Yeah.
I don't have anything else for this right now. Does anybody have any further questions on RL twenty-five, tw- thirty-two? Okay. Um, move on to RL twenty-five dash twenty-five, again, considered in finance with council member Kavanaugh and our comptroller Chuck Robinson.
All right, what are we correcting this week? Which one is this, twenty-five, twenty-five?
Okay. This happens every year, um, budget over, over budget items. Um. Let's see, uh, for this one, twenty-five dash twenty-five, um, it is taking place in the general fund and an insurance fund. Uh, the jur- the insurance fund had some additional outside legal services that they need to pay for, for fifty-seven thousand dollars. Um, taking that from various.
Cosmic, could you move that chair? Sorry.
Uh, where was I? Um, oh, from various um insurance uh unexpended insurance lines in the insurance fund. Um, the next session is uh. Playing for a peace and police and fire retirement and state retirement that came in um. Over budget due to the rates that New York State is uh this retirement system is uh charging now. And the school, the school guards, um.
We change. A raise?
Yeah.
Or an incentive or something?
We gave, we increased the incentive. The incentive was twenty-five dollars a week if they showed up for the all for all five days during the shift. Um, the police and um, uh, Kevin Brown came to and talked to us and we kind of decided that they needed the extra seventy-five dollars. So it's a hundred dollars a week to keep the guards there for the whole week. Because it's been pulling off patrol officers to watch the school crossing guards positions. Um, we also gave them a a bump in raise to equal the um minimum wage for just the time that they were there. And uh, it has worked. Um, they're keeping more uh crossing guards in the the crosswalks. Um, so it takes an officer. So it takes an officer, it leaves an officer out doing actual patrol work. So we're hoping it continues.
Do you have, do you have any idea if that deficit, deficit of uh, school crossing guards has been filled or is it, is it still a issue?
You mean, uh, you mean hiring and getting, getting enough school guards to man the crossings?
Yeah.
I, I did not have that discussion, but I can talk with, uh, the traffic guys and.
Okay.
It is difficult in the winter time.
The crossing guard who, uh, frequently speaks at traffic board is very consistently there, at least in the morning when I'm.
Fantastic. Um, and also the, um, the person who does the calling, the, the lady who does the calling got a raise too. The, I guess you'd call her the, uh, the conductor or yeah, attendance lady. So, and that's all coming from, uh, the personal services line in the police department. And then, uh, the fund various, um, budget lines in the general fund in various departments, um, fires, office supply lines, gas and heat for the city, electricity also for the city, promotions and marketing contractual and supplemental payments to disable, disabled firefighters, those are all coming from, our little extra interest that I haven't used yet um, that we received by investing in night class and in, um, treasuries.
Again, with the interest stuff, you were expecting that that may not be an ongoing solution.
It, it probably will not. I, I still will invest in treasuries because that's a little bit higher than night class right now, but it's, they're all ticking down. Cause the interest rate's going up, so the treasury market goes down.
There's, yeah, is there a motion to expedite?
I'll motion expedite.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we got the motion to expedite by council member Kavanaugh, seconded by council member Medvedsky. Is there any discussion? Seeing none.
I was gonna say the, the paperwork here says, uh, there's some lines that have pending invoices to pay as the justification. I would like to add to that.
Yes, some, the retirement bill's already been paid, so, um, I did my year end accrual. So this is, this is where the accrual happened, so. But all the other ones have bills pending.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk take the roll?
Councilor Middleton?
Aye.
Councilor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilor Rathmo? Councilor Medvedsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn is absent, council president Pro Tim Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Thank you, that is five zero.
Motion to expedite passes. I don't think we have anything further on that RL, so we're going to move on to RL 25-27. In finance with council member Kavanaugh, um, and comptroller Chuck Robinson.
So same idea, different fund, right?
Yes, this is the ramps fund. As you know, Laz manages our ramps and we get their management bill, um, usually late for December and I just got it. And we put in all the expenses, so this is their final roundup for the year. And basically they had, um, some over budget lines in all their management services. Um, I believe it was due to some pay raises and I think they gave some, I'm, I'm not sure, I, I didn't actually look at the, the bill that close, but it's mostly in their management services lines that they needed budget for. Luckily they have, um, increased earnings and, um, we had to borrow $18,000 from this, from the, they didn't have enough budget lines to cover their overages, so we had to borrow $18,000 from the general fund as an interfund transfer. And that's that, but the last two lines down there on the bottom.
I mean, have you? Do we know why these are coming? I mean, particularly the Collier Street line is $25,000 over expected.
It, it was not budgeted properly, none of these lines were budgeted properly last year, I can tell you that.
We do this this year?
I'm sorry, oh no, yeah. I, I, well Pablo was here during the budgets, budget season and we talked about it, uh, pretty robustly. So yes, I'm, I'm pretty confident that this year will be coming pretty, pretty close. Now we do, we also have the water street, which he's moving people around for various things, so that's going to be an iffy one.
When you say that it wasn't budgeted properly, can you add context to that? I understand over budget, but why?
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know like why it wasn't over budget, I didn't have any, 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 any input with that budget process. But just looking at the budget, there shouldn't have been a reason why you needed $25,000 in that ramp. The other ones are pretty close.
The department doesn't provide a reason?
This, this is, yeah, this is Laz, they, they provide a budget to us and, and then we put it into munis with various adjustments for revenues that we think are going to come in higher or lower. The same thing we did with the golf fund. I don't know what any adjustments were done last year.
If any.
And we just, and so we accept that budget and it's only in retrospect that we're able to determine whether or not it was an appropriate budget.
I mean, I, I can certainly ask that question of Carl and Pablo over there at the ramp and ask them, uh, if anything's changed this year, why they became, came over budget.
We review it as they present it to us and counsel those two, I think, as part of the budget process. But yeah, I just wanted to make that distinction that it's not, uh, it's not a city department, it's an outside agency who does our parking management services, they're coming to us with the, with their budget presentation. So I think that's why Chuck's saying he's not sure why they didn't budget properly for this one. He can't speak to that.
But we will be able to speak to whether or not they're currently proposing an appropriate budget.
They will be able to, and I think, I think what Chuck's saying is he worked with them on it this year to, to kind of figure out what went, what was off in last year is with what they were proposing.
Yeah, I'm right, their, their expenses are relatively, they should be flat for their management fees unless something happened. Now there's a lot of things in their management fees that change based on how many people work um, and what they offer them for bonuses that we can't control.
So I guess.
Trying to think what else is in there.
Part of the, so back in November, when we went through the budget process, you were aware that there were problems in last year's budget that we're now seeing now?
No, no, cause we hadn't gotten a bill, we hadn't gotten any bills since, for, when we were in November, we hadn't received any bills since September. So basically, I would have had to anticipate three months worth of, of bills and they have more payroll during the winter months because of the students coming back.
Is there a, is there some sort of limit on this? Is there some sort of?
Contractual limit?
Right, yeah. Are we, eat the payroll they send us?
I have not seen the contract, but no, the, the, we've been doing the same procedure with this payroll, with this management fees since I've been here. With various changes for, um, like, uh, paying for their, um, state unemployment tax, the rates change.
The same procedure that has resulted in over budget, being over budgeted every year, I'm just trying to clarify what you're representing, this is a constant.
No, I don't know if it's been budgeted over, over the past few years, just this one year. The same process for, for, for handling their, their bill.
You're saying we get the bill late every year?
Yes, absolutely.
Like.
Yeah, they, 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 they send it to New York or Connecticut.
Sure.
And they have an accountant there that puts their packet together and has all their expenses that they had at, at each of our ramps. Salt, electricity, all that kind of stuff.
Right, I, and, and I think I understand the, the submission piece of it, I think what I'm uncomfortable with is that we're not asking them direct questions about why they are over budgeted for a particular amount, because we're asking questions at like this table, I understand you're not able to answer those questions, but I would hope at some point someone's asking those questions.
I can certainly, certainly ask them, no, I have not asked them yet.
Cause I'm not comfortable moving forward with it if they don't actually have a legitimate reason. And if it's bonuses, I'm also not necessarily comfortable with aspects of that.
I mean, I don't have, I'd have to get a copy of the Laz contract and look at it. Honestly, I haven't read it.
Agreeing with Rebecca that it does not seem like something that I would be comfortable expediting at this point.
Is there a motion to expedite?
I'm perfectly comfortable withdrawing that.
For the whole RL?
I can't, I can't withdraw a motion, but I could.
Okay. All right, so we're not consider expedition for this, um, but we can follow up with Laz and see.
Do, wait, I guess a question if there's interest in sending this to committee? Out there that maybe talking to them in a committee meeting would make sense.
Yeah, we can, there's interest, we can take a look at it.
I'd be up for that.
So make the motion.
All right, motion refer to committee.
Motion to send to committee by council member Kavanaugh, seconded by council member Middleton. Is there any discussion? We have the clerk.
Councilor Middleton?
Aye.
Councilor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilor Rathmo?
Aye.
Councilor Medvedsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn is absent, council president Pro Tim Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Thank you, that is five zero.
Motion passes, this will be in the finance committee. And we're going to move on to the next RL, which is RL 25-28, considered in municipal and public affairs with council member Middleton and our presenter is Megan Hyman, the deputy mayor.
Uh, this is RL 25-28, a resolution to enter an agreement with a, a Binghamton University Harriet Tubman Center. Is it for the, it's for the statue, correct?
This one's not actually, this is for, um, the city has seven light poles outside the university downtown center and the Tubman Center would like to use them to hang banners.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it's, uh, just an agreement for their use of those seven light poles with banner infrastructure, they'll install and maintain.
Do they have a timeline for that? I, I know they have it something in the next month or two.
In March, I think they're doing.
For, uh, for the banner installation?
Yep.
We have sent a, a copy of the lease agreement and the whole harmless agreement from the city attorneys to, uh, their attorneys. So, excuse me, I think they're just reviewing, um, and it's just awaiting that in council approval. And then they'll have access to those, uh, banner locations, I'm not sure of their timeline on whether they have a design in mind yet or anything like that.
I was gonna ask if we have a, a design or something that we're going to be able to?
No, I don't, nothing formal that I've seen. I think they, I think, uh, Dr. Bailey, the director over there wants it to, the last I spoke to her, um, like promote the, um, downtown freedom trail in some way, but there's no sketched out design yet to my knowledge.
Funny, any further?
Nope.
Okay. To RL 25-33, considered in finance with council member Kavanaugh. Presenting will be a PD clerk, Sam Costello. I'll, I'll get it started for him. So this is RL 25-33, in ordinance to amend the 2025 clerk's office budget to adjust for ongoing responsibility adjustment. Do you want to add more to that, Sam?
Sure, yeah, I can give you a quick overview, so this is in line with a couple of other pieces of legislation from last year, as most people know, we had a vacancy in the vitals statistics office starting on August 5th of 2024. As a result, the licensing clerk who was previously 50% in the vitals office and 50% in the clerk's office was moved over to the vitals office full time. Since we have recently hired a registrar and there was another piece of legislation related to that hire, the licensing clerk has moved over to the registrar side of the office full time. So we have two full-time staff in the registrar's office. As we presented at the budget hearing last year, we requested an additional person on the clerk's side of the office so that there were two individuals on the vital side, two individuals on the clerk's side. We have not hired somebody for the open vacant position yet, so the senior licensing clerk is still performing 50% of the duties that the licensing clerk was previously performing on that side of the office. Um, I noted in the RL, the pieces of legislation that are related to this and what we are asking for in this is a continuance of that responsibility adjustment of 50%, which the senior licensing clerk is currently performing until the position is filled. We've submitted a job requisition form with personnel to make sure that we can fill that position as soon as possible, as soon as we hire into that position, the responsibility adjustment will cease.
Thank you for that. Think this is, the only thing that seems different from the other times that this has come forward is you now have a nice form, which I think is good for standardizing, uh,
Yeah.
salary adjustments.
So we received, apparently there's a new responsibility adjustment process. The director of personnel sent this form to us on Thursday and asked us to fill it out. Um, I received a response from the director of personnel after submitting it on Thursday evening, we received a response on Friday evening, so that's why it's not included in the packet, but I did provide it for everybody to reference. If anyone has questions on the director of personnel's response, which you can see on page two, um, I'm happy to engage with those, we, um, do have somewhat of a differing opinion on how to best deal with the vacancy.
Can you share your difference of opinion?
Yeah, happily. So sort of the discrepancy here is that historically, this office, since the COVID-19 pandemic, has truly been understaffed. We put this on public record during the budget hearing when we mentioned that various aspects that are integral to the functioning of the clerk's office and to the functioning of city hall have been neglected, not as a result of the staff being incompetent, in fact, they've gone above and beyond to try to maintain things like records management protocol, record keeping, customer service standards in the office, but what we saw when we came into the office in January was just unfortunately due to staffing changes as a result of the pandemic that the minimal amount of staff and splitting somebody truly between two sides made it such that if one person is out sick, it's impossible for someone to keep up with the work on both sides of the office. We want our staff to be able to take a vacation and be treated to the extent that, um, they're able to perform their duties without overextending themselves constantly and experiencing burnout. Um, and we also have targets related to long-term records management that truly require two staff members on both sides. Um, the response that we received from some folks in administration was that the office has survived this long and that we should be able to maintain that until we're able to hire into that position. We feel that given that the position has already been budgeted for, for 2025 and is currently not filled, that that money has already been allocated to having staff in that position. And given that the senior licensing clerk is doing 50% of the duties of what that individual would be doing, we do feel this is an appropriate use of the funds.
That's really helpful context, thank you.
And, and just a quick question, do you foresee that position being filled?
As soon as, as soon as possible.
As soon as possible.
Yeah, we are pursuing all avenues to make sure that it gets filled as soon as possible, we've followed up with all the necessary paperwork and have moved as quickly as we can to fill that position. Our intent is absolutely to, uh, serve the public to the best of our ability and provide the type of long-term planning that this office really needs.
as quickly as we can to fill that position. Our intent is absolutely to, uh, serve the public to the best of our ability and provide the type of long-term planning that this office really needs.
And I'll just say, um, to that point, Councilmember Middleton, we, when we interviewed folks for the registrar position and we had many incredible qualified candidates, we also extended the offer to them to come back and apply because we had hopes that we would have a position opening. We said, look, we're not sure, because it was before budget hearings had actually happened, but we said if another opening comes up, we'd love you to come back and apply. So we are anticipating some enthusiasm around this position and, um, we have a very highly qualified competent senior licensing clerk who we feel very confident will be able to assist us in training and getting this person up to speed quite quickly.
So the position is now posted, so.
The requisition form was entered with personnel.
It's posted.
Today and posted, I, I assume following that by them.
Um, I would just, just, just for math purposes, um, maybe Chuck remembers. When we came up with the number, the increased number that we put in the budget for the new clerk sign position, we calculated it with the March start date, the salary plus the cost for benefits. So I don't know that there actually is this money, this, this buffer in the budget as it stands at this number.
I would say that the comptroller gave what his version was a rough estimate. I haven't received an actual number of what the salary plus benefits looks like, especially in light of the new CBA. I don't know what any of those numbers look like, but I'm happy to look at them. Again, we submitted the RL with the end date of ten weeks, just because we weren't sure when we were going to be able to fill the position. Assuming that we're able to fill it within the next month, I think we are not anticipating a significant expense. I would also point out that the clerk's office increased our revenue by over four thousand dollars last year to make up for responsibility adjustments that we had. So we are quite confident that we will exceed revenue targets again this year, and in that way, we're not concerned about having to pull budget out of other lines or from other departments. And in order for those revenue targets to be exceeded, it is incredibly important that we have competent, well-trained and full-time staff on both sides of the office.
But that being said, I'm happy to, uh, do those calculations if and when the numbers associated with those benefits were provided to my office.
Anything further?
Motion to expedite?
I'll second.
Motion to expedite by Councilmember Rathmo, seconded by Council. Is there any discussion on the expedition?
Are we going to have all the numbers by Wednesday?
Sarah?
All right, I missed that. Could you repeat yourself, please?
I have the numbers by Wednesday.
That seems like a question for finance.
I, I genuinely, I mean, I know that the senior licensing clerk's current salary is forty thousand dollars a year from January until December, so I can only work off of what I have in the budget sheet.
So for benefits, I mean, I, I would need like, um, the salary, what it's going to be hired at for one, and then the other one, the other, all the other benefits just fall into place.
Right, I, I think that the salary, the, I mean, there's a range, obviously commensurate with experience, but the salary goal was forty, forty thousand to match the existing position in that office.
That's what's listed in the budget.
Right. Um, and I believe that's what's listed on the job posting.
And that, and that's from January first, though.
Correct.
So.
That would represent a full twelve.
If I had a higher date of, say, April first, you know, I'd do three quarters of it or whatever.
Right, I, I think we're, we are striving for March first, but you know, I think that the math would be useful either way.
Okay.
So is it possible to do, get it by Wednesday or? Does that seem reasonable?
Sure.
Okay, I mean, I will just reiterate that the reason that we need expedition, just to go off of what Kent, the Director of Personnel mentioned earlier, is that we have over and over again interrupted this particular individual's ability to access a consistent and regular paycheck despite the fact that they have never once protested proceeding forward with completing these duties. And so to continuously have this interruption in pay, when we have stated multiple times on public record that this responsibility adjustment has always been intended to continue until the position was filled or until we were able to address staffing concerns. I think there is an onus on us to make sure that this individual is properly compensated for an abundance of work and working outside of their job description.
If, if I may say something, I, from what I understand, the original RL that was presented at work session on September ninth was basically meant for till the position was filled for the registrar. The registrar was filled. We did it, we continued it for training purposes till the end of the year. For Tony or for the, excuse me, the senior licensing clerk and the licensing clerk. That's when the RL should have ended, and it ended at the twenty-four budget. The training period should have been over with. This was, it was, there was no mention of a new position. You didn't even know a new position was going to happen in September. That was, that was, that was not even mentioned.
So a new position was something that we advocated for through every part of the budget process, including the introductory part of the budget process where we met exclusively with finance, um, the comptroller's office, the treasurer, uh, all the relevant entities, and it was also summarized in a document to the finance office, the mayor's office.
But it wasn't mentioned in the original RL that you keep mentioning about the registrar.
That was representative of the money that was going to cover that position, not
No.
The duties associated with that position.
Sorry, in that, at late, late in that meeting, it specifically was said that it was for fulfilling the position for the registrar.
So there were two different positions discussed within this RL. The senior licensing clerk does not provide any type of supportive action to the vital statistics side of the office. So those are two disparate, the training would be only on the vital statistics side of the office.
And that person got a responsibility adjustment. So, and the senior licensing clerk got a licensing adjustment because he was in the office training the vitals clerk.
If I may just reference the most recent legislation, which is from December fourth, twenty-twenty-four, in which the description of the legislation acknowledges that the licensing clerk is still doing fifty percent of the registrar's duty. So that takes care of the registrar's side of the office. In the absence of a licensing clerk on the clerk's side of the office, that fifty percent absence still remains. We agreed both with the Director of Personnel, the mayor's office, and with City Council when we asked for another individual on the clerk's side of the office, that the individual who had previously been performing the licensing clerk duties at fifty percent capacity on the clerk's side of the office would move full-time in twenty-twenty-five to the registrar's side of the office, leaving that fifty percent of that licensing clerk's previous duties vacant on the clerk's side of the office. That was reiterated in this legislation from December fourth, which I can happily provide a hard copy for you, Chuck, if you're interested. It was reiterated in the budget hearings, and we have had several meetings on the record and off to have a discussion about the intention in twenty-twenty-five to have two full-time staff on either side. It logically does not seem to make sense to us to pull one person who is currently providing full-time assistance on the registrar's side. Just to give you a real life example, the registrar was unfortunately ill last week and was out of the office four out of five days of the week. That person had to stay on that side of the office that entire time, and the person in the, on the clerk's side of the office was still covering those duties. It doesn't to us make logical sense from a staffing or a management perspective to take that individual who has been working on the registrar's side of the office now, um, since August and resplit them back into two sections when the intent is to hire somebody full-time on the clerk's side of the office, uh, clerk's side of the office. Um, so even if, as this situation evolved over time, so too did the legislation and the legislative intent, and we've made that very clear.
I'm comfortable with the clerk's representation and still support, um, with the understanding that any numbers, uh, in question be provided well before a decision needs to be.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't think the numbers have anything to do with, um, what needs to be vote, I mean, what needs to be voted on, so that's fine.
So, right, so I think the two different options that are being presented is one, having the, the third person in the office go back to splitting half and half until
No.
Someone's hired, or keeping them on one side and then paying additional.
It's only, it's only a, oh, never mind.
Right, so I think from a department head's perspective, it doesn't really make sense to shuffle one employee back from one position to another and back and forth when we already know what the long-term infrastructure goal is and we have a strategy to get there as quickly as possible.
I'd also just highlight that, like, again, this is not happening from a top-down perspective. This was in consultation with the staff in the office, confirming with the staff that they wanted to be on the sides that they were on, that the situation was functional and working well for everybody involved. We have not heard, and we had regular checkpoints with all of the staff that have been affected by these types of changes and made decisions based on staff feedback. Uh, the person who was on the registrar's side of the office is not receiving additional responsibility adjustment, is not continuing to train or act outside of title in any way that their current position doesn't already deal with. And our intention is to actually provide them with a title that's commensurate and descriptive of being full-time on the registrar's side of the office. So just from a functional standpoint and from a financial standpoint, it seems to make more sense to everyone involved to just continue to keep those two folks on that side of the office, compensate this individual for making up the gap and pulling from the line that the budget already exists in.
I'm going to hope that's the end of this discussion and we, we still have the motion to expedite. I'll take the roll.
Sure.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Rathmo?
Aye.
Councilmember Matavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn is absent. Council President Pro Tim Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Thank you. That is five zero.
Yeah.
Motion passes. Um, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
For a second.
Nobody wants to leave?
I'll second.
All right. And it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.